I'd like to call to order the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 7th, 2024, to order at this time. We'll start with our Assistant County Manager, Ben Warren, leading us in the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you to conduct the business of Onslow County. God, please bless our social workers who we honor here today for their dedication to our community. Lord, we ask you to equip them with professional and relational resources they need to continue making an impactful change as they work within our community. And may your blessings be upon us always. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the elected officials that are here with us this morning. North Topsail Beach Hallerman, Mr. Rick Grant, always here with us. And then there in the back of the room, Sheriff Chris Thomas. We appreciate him. Was she? I looked for her and I didn't find. See her? There she is. She usually sits there. But Register of Deeds Amiga Jarman is here as well, hiding, incognito there. So we appreciate everyone being here this morning. That being said, we ask that all those in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. The board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the, at the end of the agenda or on the agenda. With that being said, we need a motion to adopt today's agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move right into the approval of items on the consent agenda. We don't have anyone to ask to take anything off of that to bring to the agenda. We'd like a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we move right into our first presentation. And our Assistant County Manager, Ben Warren, will do this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proclamation that we have this morning is for the National Social Work Month 2024. And at this time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Social Work Month 2024. Whereas the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. And whereas social workers put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty. And whereas social workers follow a code of ethics that calls on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. And whereas social workers work in all facets of our society, including schools, hospitals, community organizations, the military, mental health centers, social service agencies, corporations, and local state and federal government. And whereas social workers are on the front lines in helping this nation solve pressing social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services, an opioid addiction crisis, and economic inequality. And whereas social workers are in high demand, with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest growing professions in our nation during this decade. And whereas the 2024 Social Work Month theme, Empowering Social Workers, embodies the need for society to support social workers so that they can continue to do the life-affirming work they do and help address societal needs. And whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities, and our nation, helping everyone achieve their full potential. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledged March 2024 as National Social Work Month in Onslow County, presented the 7th day of March 2024. Representatives from the Onslow County Department of Social Services, Senior Services, and the Health Department will accept the proclamation. And the chairman has requested that Commissioner Bennett present the proclamation.
Wow. We appreciate you all being here today. All the social workers that I've ever had the pleasure of working with are just hardworking, dedicated, and, and, and great advocates for, for our citizens. And I know it's a challenging job, and we just really appreciate what y'all do. I want to present this proclamation. And if you have any comments. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett, and to the board. Thank you for recognizing and accepting the proclamation, recognizing March as Social Work Appreciation Month, where the theme is empowering social workers, inspiring action, and leading change. And that is what we do as social workers. Oftentimes, we are there out on the field, working long hours, spending more time making sure the well-being of the citizens of Onslow County are being taken care of, and oftentimes spending less time with our families as well. So at this time, we thank you so much, and we would like for you to continue to empower us and encourage us as we continue to empower and encourage the citizens of Onslow County. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work that you do in Onslow County. We will continue to do in Onslow County. And now we'll move to item four, public comment. Mr. Smitherson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have five citizens signed up to speak today. And the first one is Robert Hill.
Good morning. My name is Robert Hill. I live at 235 Wetherington Road here in Jacksonville. I'm a retired nurse. I'm disabled. I have secondary progressive multiple sclerosis. I'm on medications that severely compromise my immune system. This is about indoor smoking in multifamily housing. I have neighbors that have moved in, and they smoke so heavily it comes into my apartment, and I have trouble breathing. I've approached them. They have done nothing to stop what they're doing. And I have no recourse, because there is no, nothing in the contract that says no smoking for the apartments. So when I started researching this, I found out a lot of things, a lot of things I already knew. Secondhand smoke. According to the CDC, there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Even a brief exposure causes immediate harm. Health problems caused by secondhand smoke in adults who do not smoke include coronary heart disease, stroke, and lung cancer, as well as adverse reproductive health effects in women, including low birth rate. Secondhand smoke causes sudden infant death syndrome, respiratory infections, ear infections, and asthma attacks in small children. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, their Tobacco Prevention and Control Branch, multi-unit housing. Nothing could be worse than exposure to secondhand smoke against your will in your own home. In July of 2018, U.S. Department of Health and Human, excuse me, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development took all public housing properties to smoke-free. Some individual local housing authorities have added even all tobacco products and extended policy beyond 25 feet of outside of the buildings. It even affects our pets. It gives them lung cancer, respiratory problems, and other types of cancer and health problems. I need your help. If you can pass an ordinance to ban smoking in multifamily housing, is what my goal is, because, because it will save lives. And mine is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our second speaker, excuse me, is Laurie Tutton?
Mary is large.
Sure, you may approach. Sure.
Good morning. My name is Laurie Tooten. It's recent. I just got married, so I'm not used to saying that. And this is Mary Downe. Our concern this morning is about the adult daycare with the senior citizen. My mother has been going there for approximately four years. This is part of her routine. It has been her routine for four years. We took her out for a short period of time and put her in a facility. She wasn't taken care of very well. I wasn't about to leave my mom in that, so we brought her out. And thankfully, we had the, the adult daycare to fall back on. My brother and I share taking care of my mother. I'm a flight attendant, so I am gone half the time. So we share in taking care of her. When I'm gone, he takes care of her, and I take care of her when I get home. This daycare is, we depend on it completely for the care of my mother Monday through Friday. It is a part of her routine. Routine is important. My mother has Alzheimer's. Several of the people in the daycare have Alzheimer's, have other issues with memory. They're dependent upon that. The families are dependent upon this care. And we were given a note on February 23rd. We were given a survey back in August of asking us if this would, you know, how it would affect us for it to close. All of us gave the same answer, pretty much, that it would be detrimental to our, our lifestyle, our, our family members, everything. Never heard another thing about it. Then we got a letter, February 23rd, saying that it would be closed. We had 30 days, the end of March, it would be closing. And in the letter was about, we are still so concerned in our support for our adult daycare, our adults and our senior community, but we're going to close this for two years. Two years ago, we were, we were told at that time that you were going to start renovation on this facility. They had started. We were told that they may have to close for a couple weeks or a month. When it came down to what they were going to do was start at one end and go through the, to the other side. And that we may have to deal with finding placement for our family members for a couple weeks or a month. And that was reasonable. But this is not reasonable for this facility to be closed for two years. We have no idea. Me and my, we are scrambling to figure out how and what we are going to do with my mother. And I know it's going to be detrimental to her to not have that routine in her life. And, and I speak for all of the families that have their, their family member there Monday through Friday. And there's, from what I understand, there's between 17 and 20 families that depend on that Monday through Friday. And then there are people that do drop-ins just to give themselves a break from that family member. It is difficult. It is, they are very difficult. If you have not dealt with someone with this kind of, these kind of issues, it is very difficult and a hardship on the family. And we are asking you to come up with something else. I was told that, you know, you've looked for different places, and there's not things that are up to code. I put a, something on Facebook, oh, I'm going to run, I'll have time. I put something on Facebook, and several people were like, there are so many places in Jacksonville that have closed. There's, there are places that you could look into that would be able to accommodate, that are up to code, and that you guys, I just don't think that the due diligence has been done to find an alternative. There is no alternative for us. And I'm asking you to please reconsider closing this facility, reconsider how you have fashioned this whole thing to go about, and reconsider the, the timing of this being closed. It is not acceptable. It is not acceptable to the senior community. You are, you are not looking out for them. You are not looking out for the families that have to take care of them. And I'm asking you to reconsider that.
Well, everybody knows the stressfulness that's on a family member of an Alzheimer's or dementia patient. I don't think, unless you've done it, I don't know that you can truly understand the stress that comes from caregiving. I'm by myself down here. I moved down here about a year ago, and I found this center. And it's been just such a blessing to me to have that for my mom. She does so much better in the evenings. Weekends are tough because she doesn't have anywhere to go, but it helps immensely. As you know, Alzheimer's, dementia, there's over 100 types of dementia. And it's going to be growing in numbers, younger and younger people. I worked in that field for about three years, saw people 58, my age, living in a assisted living. It's very sad. So there's going to be more of a need for these types of places. There's only one here. There's probably going to be, there really needs to be more. We need to do something for these people and the families. I have no help, so I'm by myself. Over two-thirds of people who get dementia are women. And it's not a coincidence, women are the caregivers usually. Most of the people who are taking care of that, those family members are women. I, I'm just coming to ask if you guys would try to reconsider and maybe make a compromise. I had suggested churches in the area that maybe don't, the buildings don't get used during the week. It's always been my observation at any church I've ever been in. And I figured a newer church building that was up to code. If they've got a mortgage, they want that mortgage gone. It would be nice to have the rent money for the space. I don't know how much they looked into that. You know, how much anybody checked into finding a place for these people. If it's possible, maybe we could compromise. I know there's a contract. My husband works for, he does a company, he works for a company that does stuff for the federal government and for the military. Sometimes things don't get started right away. They're not canceling the contract or reneging on the contract, but maybe they have to put it off, delay it for a little bit. If there's any possible way we could delay the contract for the people coming in to tear the building down until maybe something could be put in place for people. I suggested maybe having people come in at night or work in the weekends. My husband does that too on military bases. He goes and works at night, and they reopen that morning. But I was told that they weren't renovating the building. It was being torn down. So anyway, the, the closest place that I've found to be able to take my mom to continue daycare is in Wilmington. And that's, adds to the stress. It's twice the distance for me, twice the gas, and twice the price for me to take my mom Monday through Friday. And I know most of the people that use this facility are here in Jacksonville. A lot of these people, not only the dementia, but they've got physical issues. These families work. They're dependent on this. You know, they may be left to leaving the person at home. And, you know, they get a hot meal there. They get two snacks. They get breakfast. It's just a blessing. And I'm just asking that you guys would please reconsider and maybe try to come up with another way we can do this, to stay open. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Rick Grant.
Well, for those of you that don't recognize me, obviously nobody up here, but thank you. Wanted to give you an update on what's going on in the town, and also to thank you all. We're enjoying working with the, the new manager. Our manager is very pleased. So I think that's great. A couple of things going on. One is the Ocean City 75th anniversary. It's this year. And so they're going to be doing that as part of Jazz Fest. I know Alice has talked to you about that. That's a big deal for us in terms of what's going on. A lot of stuff going on. We actually, at, not this last boarding, but the one before, went ahead and approved our beach engineer going forward to put together a beach plan for the entire thing, and, and about how we'd finance and do those type of things. So within the next 12 months, we believe we'll be able to get all of the permitting in place to basically turn our beaches into what they call engineered beaches. And what does that mean for us? It's very simple, is that under the FEMA rules, if it's not an engineered beach and there's a storm, they'll work on the beach itself, but not on the dunes. Once they become an engineered beach, they'll replace the dunes as well after a storm. So it's a big deal for us. Yesterday, we had our fire truck delivered. And I'm sure you all know, the, we found out the lead leg, the lead time on a new ladder truck is two and a half years now to get them done. And this had been ordered for a while. We went and worked with, Jones Onslow had this deal with USDA where they were doing financing for this. So we were able to get 0% financing from them as well. So we were pleased with that. The other one too is the fire station. We've actually put the contracts together for the south fire station. And I know I've thanked you guys for this before, everyone, sorry, Lisa, everyone here before about, the fire taxes made a huge difference for us. We'll be able to build the fire station, which probably should have been rebuilt four or five years ago. That money that you're allocating to us for the fire stuff is going to go in to replace equipment and to build a fire station. Again, we're really pleased with that. And then I'll make it brief. On a personal level, one of the things I've found out in the last couple of years about attending with this stuff is how much I've learned from you all and from the county and stuff about what's going on. And I don't think, Tim, you are here, one of my first discussions, this is a couple of years ago, I made a comment in the first meeting with a smaller group of you, that it's amazing that I found out that everything on Facebook's not true. And, and what I've found is, when you come to the meetings and you listen to them, and you look at the things going on, that there's good things happening. And Facebook doesn't really give everybody a good shake. So anyway, on my behalf, thank you. And on the town, thank you. And we look forward to working with you all going forward. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Our final speaker today, Mr. Chairman, is Dr. R. Peterson.
When I get up, I'm used to addressing Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am, I live at 318 March C. Lane, not too far away from here. I'm the pastor of the Seventh-day Adventist Church. Look, I know that you all have budgets. I know you have certain things that you have taken along the way from the federal government. And there are requirements. I know that monies need to be spent. The bu, building needs to be improved, I understand. We get old, but we expect that we're going to be able to continue to do the same things we've always done. My mother is 92 years old. She's starting to lose it, but she really perks up when I'm taking her to the center. She gets to talk to people. She won't talk to me, but she'll talk to the others. It's, to get her to draw and to do things is like pulling teeth. But when she's with other people, it is helpful. I realize that it is hard to find a place. I'm sure our county manager's office has looked, tried to do things. I have a fellowship hall that could be used, but I can't say my building is up to snuff the way that it should be. As you all know, my building used to be the first Free Will Baptist Church. And we've been constantly trying to update it, make it better, improve things. But you're never going to say that you're at that point that you can say that it is acceptable for something like this. I would hope, and I would appeal to you, that I think the greatest thing that we have in our community is how we take care of our citizens. Yes, I will be honest with you. I appreciate having a few hours off. I can get some things done. I can go out with my wife places. One of us has to stay with my mom. You know, when you're dealing with someone who falls, you're on your guard the whole time. And it is just a relief to have a little bit of time off. I know that you're trying to do the best that you can do. But I'm just appealing to you again, that if there is some way possible to find someplace to put them up. I know I didn't get my notice until Tuesday of this week. I know it went out, but somehow I didn't get my letter. I'm a good citizen. I voted for some of you on Tuesday. And I just want to remind you that, please, don't forget the human part that is a part of this all. Having served at some time, I served on a subcommittee for one of the counties where I was a pastor at. I know you have a tremendous weight upon you. I'm just asking, please, make a consideration. 15, 17 families doesn't sound like much, but it does have an effect. And I would rather go back to my church and tell my people that we have a community that cares. Thank you for this time to address you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. If you'll lead us right through the, the general items we have coming up.
Yes, sir. First up, Deputy Finance Director Lisa Marlin is going to come up and discuss a surplus land disposition matter.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The county received two new offers from citizens to purchase surplus real property. The officer, the offers are for parcel number 058565 at North Carolina Highway 24 in the amount of $2,700, and parcel number 064003 at Andermora Road in the amount of $4,352.69. The statutes allow the county to sell property that no longer serves a public purpose and is uneconomical or inefficient. The county's standard practice has been to sell surplus property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process. This process allows for other interested parties to submit upset offers on the property after it has been advertised for a 10-day period. If no upset bids are received within the 10-day period, the properties will be sold to the citizens. If the county receives any upset bids, the final high offer will be brought back to the board for consideration. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve resolutions number 24-003 and 24-004, which authorizes the purchasing division head to conduct the sales of the properties using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolutions on behalf of the county.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the next item is a request from the Jacksonville Ospreys baseball team. You received a letter about three weeks ago from the club asking for assistance. The board has not deliberated this matter, however, if it, and it's not something that's in our budget. However, if it's something that the board desires to do, it would be an eligible expense through the tourism funds. My suggestion to you is that if you do desire to provide support for this cause, that it be as a sponsor of the team, not allocated to any use or product or purchase or any specific reason, but as a general sponsorship. And we're happy to process that if it's so your desire. Otherwise, we will inform the requesters likewise.
I will make the motion to approve that.
I'm going to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes. How many people do we sponsor now? Manager, David, if you would, please?
I'm so sorry. I have no idea. I really don't.
To me, the, the use, and, and how are we going to sponsor, and what pot does it come from for sponsorship? Do you got a recommendation?
It would certainly be through the tourism funds to promote tourism in our community.
You know, chapter 187, or 857, House Bill 6, no, well, 672, is written, and it's written so vague that... that we could use that funding for almost anything that the Board desires to use it for. My concern here is, if that we do this, that's going to open the door for other like programs to come and ask for the same thing. This is a private business for profit that we're going to be sponsoring here, and that needs to be considered.
Let me, let me make my comment. I totally disagree with that, that concept. If we have funds in tourism that we could use for this, listen, Jacksonville Ospreys is a baseball team in Onslow County. It's bringing college kids here. Now, I've played baseball all my life. My son played college baseball. I was at the opening day ceremony, whatever it was, where they had two, three games, and you should have seen the crowd there, okay? It brings in money. This is something that we can stand behind as Onslow County. This is our team. It's a woodenback college league where kids from ECU and other states come and form a team with the Ospreys. Here in Jacksonville, the name Osprey is, you know, we've got the name that also represents the Marine Corps, the biggest presence here in Onslow County. All right? So, again, I'm a diehard baseball fan. That's, that's America's sport, all right? And this is something that is attracting people. People from Kinston and other cities are going to come watch their team play against Jacksonville. When they come into this city, what are they going to do? They may stay overnight, because they don't want to drive back to wherever they may be from. If they're from Virginia, they may stay overnight for a day or two, putting heads on beds in the local hotels. They're going to shop at our stores, eat at our restaurants. This is a win-win for us, and if we can use tourism money, then we should be able to do that, because, you know, just to start with, look, you've got Kinston that had the Indians. You know, I'm a big proponent of getting a minor league team down here. You go to Myrtle Beach, and you've got a minor league ball club. You go up to St. Street to Morehead City, you've got the, you've got a minor league ball team, okay? Sports attracts money, plain and simple. The United States is, we are the biggest country and lover of sports, especially baseball and football. And I'm not even going to get into college football, because that's religion down in the South. So I think this is a win-win, and I am all for this sponsorship. If we can legally fund this without getting in trouble, we should do this, because we always talk about bringing in people from other parts of the state to come to our county. And when you mention the word baseball, and a college team to look at future major league ball players that you never know of, that are playing from other university, to me, that's exciting. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there, because I just, I'm going to reemphasize, it's a win-win for me, and we're asking, they're asking for $38,627. That's it, a one-time fee. If you ever know anything about baseball, that money will come in handy to buy equipment and other stuff for these college, because these kids are in college. That means they're either playing on scholarship with whatever team they may be from, or they're putting themselves through college, and some of these kids can't afford to buy a baseball bat, catcher's equipment, gloves, batting gloves, sliding gloves. I know the whole gamut, because I play ball. And again, it's expensive, and a bat nowadays for college level or major league levels, $5, $6, $700 a bat, easily, depending on which one you get. So, $38,000 to me is chump change, especially since we've provided money for other projects that are triple, triple this cost. So, that's all I got to say. I'm all in favor.
I would like to say one thing, I concur with, because the city of Jacksonville has already jumped in to help out with this. It said, those of you who've been around Jacksonville long enough, it's at Jack Amiet. Jack Amiet's coming back alive. I can remember when I used to police in those areas, it was pretty dangerous at times, but they're trying to bring that place back. And with the new baseball being there, being at Jack Amiet's going to be a big asset for the city and the county. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Mark's been trying to say something.
Mr. Price.
Let him go first, and then I'll go, okay?
Yeah, I have a question. The, the letter that we received pointed out that many of these assets could be used by our county parks and recs and that sort of thing. Are you suggesting, Mr. Smitherman, that we not have any connection to that? We just give a sponsorship and not try to use these assets that may be purchased with the money of the sponsorship? Who would be in control of determining where the batting cage would go, or where the, you know, the backstop would go, if we, if we did have access to these? Or are you just saying we shouldn't have access to these, this equipment that they're purchasing with the money that we sponsor with?
We would absolutely love to accept an offer to be a partner with the Osprey and the, Ospreys in the use of this equipment, certainly. I think what I'm saying is, I don't recommend you tie the expenditure to any particular use, and if, if there is that reciprocal attitude there, we would certainly love to take advantage of the resources that they may have throughout.
So, in that context, then, who would, who would make the decision about when the asset, I mean, understandably, it would, during their season, we couldn't use it, but outside their season, who would determine who had access to the backstop and the batting cages? Our Parks and Rec Director? Or who would it be?
Well, they would certainly own anything they purchase with sponsorship money, and it would be up to their good graces to, to work with us to do that. I am, and I defer to Mr. DeSalms, that I'm, I'm recommending you not have a quid pro quo related to tourism funds.
And I know, go ahead, Mr. DeSalms, and then we'll get Mr. Bennett.
I would just say, it's up to the Board how they want to give the money, right? So if you just want to give it for tourism, and they use it the way they want, they wouldn't be tied to give us access to the batting facilities. But if you, if you wanted to tie it, that's certainly a conversation you can have. Obviously, that's a two-way conversation, right? We would need their approval, and I don't know the logistics of that, but we, I don't think we've had that conversation. Certainly happy to have it if that's the Board's desire.
Well, just as a follow-up, as, as long as Onslow County Parks and Rec had an opportunity to use the equipment, then maybe I could see a justification for using the 38,000, but if we did not, and it was just for that, that team that's making money as a, as a private business, then that's their, that's their can of worms. That's not us.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't want to plow the same ground again, but I would just want to point out that, you know, entertainment is the biggest economic leakage that we have in Onslow County, people leaving here to find entertainment somewhere else. So, the idea that we're going to bring people into Onslow County with a baseball team is absolutely great to me, and would also point out that we're not, we're not setting any precedence here. We've, we've incentivized other private businesses to come into Onslow County. I note Atlantic Construction, which are Atlantic, Atlantic Seafood, that we incentivized in Holly Ridge to a much larger extent than, than $38,000. Trask is coming right here in Burton Park. They were incentivized by a lot more than $38,000. And the Shell Building right over here that we sold was, was an incentive of a lot more. I would, I would, I would say that every, if you look at any community who's brought a, a ball team into their community, they've, they've helped with some of the expenses, the capital expenses to get started with that baseball team. I'd argue if, if somebody wanted to bring an NFL team into Onslow County, we'd probably be looking at a whole lot more money to help them get it, get it here. So, I'm absolutely in favor of this, I think, and I don't think we need to put any strings attached to it. It's a one-time, one-time sponsorship, maybe, maybe they'll put our name on a sign or something. And I would note that, that the owners of the team are here. If anybody wanted to have any, any questions of them, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer them. That's all I have.
Before we call a question, and I'll share a couple of things, Mr. Scott had another question real quick.
I just got one point that I want to make, and I'm not against any sports. Y'all need to understand, because I am the only one on this board that is an official for football and wrestling, okay? We don't have a plan that's been presented to this Board, an operational plan. Are they going to be required to pay that back? This is truly a point that we've got to decide what we're going to require from people to come up and to ask for money. This is a private organization that has not presented a plan to this Board, and that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Close this out before we, we make a decision. Number one, the request is 30, 38,000 some dollars. We probably need to discuss, if we pass it, how much we really want to be in that sponsorship. That's just the request that they, they made. I think, I think, Tino would be more than happy with any amount that would, that would come to, would help out there. So we'll be discussing that amount, if we want to do something less, or, or the 38,000. And we got the motion.
We got a motion, right?
Yep. So if we want to stick with that, then that's fine. Yeah, I heard him. I hadn't spoke yet, though, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, me neither.
And Lisa has not either, that's why we haven't said a word. I'll say, I'll say this. Tourism money is requested yearly in our, our budget process, and even monies that go down to support North Topsail Beach at the end of the day is really supporting a lot of homes that are being rented through the, through the beach season that are privately owned, and the key to that is those privately owned businesses and those privately owned homes bring people into Onslow County who spend money at our restaurants and spend money at our hotels, or they spend money, they get here and, and they forgot something, and they'll, they'll go and purchase it and, and utilize it here. Now, we, we don't have a minor league baseball team, because minor league baseball, you're going to have to have a stadium, and you're going to spend 70 to 85 million dollars just to get that stadium in here. So we've got an opportunity to support a group that's come in that is going to bring money into Onslow County. You know, not everybody will have to run to Kinston to see them, in which they're, like, so anybody knows, the Kinston Indians don't have much time left in Kinston, that they are being moved. So, between Morehead and here could be the only programs, and I think Morehead is another college program that's actually down there that's a different level. So, I don't think we're stepping out of line, as long as we know that people will be coming to Onslow County to, to see the ballgames, to spend the money in the city, in the county, and that money is what we spend tourism money on. So, with that being said, we have a motion and a second, and the amount is the 38, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa wanted to speak. Speak, Lisa.
No, 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 really. I, I mean, I just want to say, I appreciate exactly what Commissioner Bennett, or not Bennett, actually Bennett Buchanan, Knapp, Price, and Scott, and, and you too, Tim, are all saying. Tourism dollars are, there's a gray area, and I don't think that we're doing anything wrong, for sure. I do see the question about spending that money. I do agree with the investment that we would be making, and I will say this, having attended that game last year, it was phenomenal, and it was a rainy day.
It was a wacky day.
It was cold and rainy, and there were so many people out there during inclement conditions, that I really think that we're going to be doing a smart investment here in our community with something to do. I, you know, I think we all still hear, there's nothing to do here in Onslow County or Jacksonville, and that would be adding to it. That's all.
Family atmosphere, city investing, the county investing, everybody investing for, for, for good quality fund to bring to Jacksonville and Onslow County. With all that being said, motion and a second, discussion's ended. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Vote is five to two in favor, and we are looking forward to the inaugural season of the Jacksonville Ospreys in Onslow County.
Outstanding.
So now, I believe that is, that, that's it for the regular agenda, and we will move to managers' comments.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for a good, productive first workshop. Today is the first day of our new meeting format, where we meet and informally discuss matters facing the county and, and provide staff direction on how to deal with those issues, and it was a very productive day. We got a lot done, and I look forward to future conversations in that workshop format. The, you know, it's really unfortunate, we're in a place where we are having to make some investments, and it creates pain, and that investment is our multipurpose complex, and it's creating a lot of pain for not only certain services that we provide, but the employees involved, the citizens, the clients. But we have to make those investments so that we can improve what we do for the future. The facility around the adult daycare, we have a permit for 24 places. It has to be, it's just like regular daycare, you have to be licensed by the state, there has to be inspections, there's all those things, and they certainly have been under consideration as we have advanced this measure. We will continue to pursue altern, alternatives. Right now, we don't have a space alternative. If we are able to come up with one, we will certainly address that issue. It's a, it's a wonderful service that we provide, it's a unique service, and it is highly valued by some families in our community, and we don't take that lightly, that they are being displaced for a, a period of time as we make an effort to improve our service for the long term of the county. And it's unfortunate that people are affected by change, and, and that's where we are right now, and we'll continue to look for solutions. Finally, I, I do want to say how much I appreciate the people and the business of social work. I've been in local government work for pushing 30 years now, and I've never met a social worker that didn't blow me away, as some of the hardest-working, most compassionate people I've ever met, and able to take some of the most dire situations and find positive for families. And it is a, it's a calling. These people do not make a lot of money, and they have a disproportionate amount of stress in their work, in what they do. And I appreciate what they do for this community. I see it firsthand, and I've seen it firsthand over the years, and I'm glad we recognized them today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. We'll start with Commissioner's comments. We'll start, Commissioner Scott, if you want to start us this morning?
First off, this past Tuesday, we, now, we had the election. I want to congratulate the winners. I've got eight months remaining. I will pursue everything that we've discussed before, and I thank you for the opportunity of serving you, and may God be the glory.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Scott said with a congratulations to the candidates who will advance to the general election, and a special thank you to those who are willing to file and put themselves out there and be willing to run as well for, for various positions in county government or state government. And a reminder that there is a runoff election, May 14th, for Lieutenant Governor, and runoffs are notoriously low turnout, and so I'd encourage you to mark that on your calendar. May 14th is a runoff. So, turnout, get your family to turn out, they could be the difference in a runoff election. The American farmer is one of the most productive farmers in the world. We went to the Ag Awards the other night, and they were talking about crop yields, and if I remember correctly, it was something like 199 bushels of corn per acre. If, was that right? I think that's what the guys, what they said. You know, that's tremendous output of the American farmer is why we can eat every day. And so, we recognized them the other night, and I appreciate what they do. They had special recognition for Mr. Alan Trot, was recognized as the master farmer for Onslow County, so another congratulations to him, and have a good afternoon, and we will see you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. Just want to say thank you so much to the citizens that came out today to express their concerns about the different issues that they have. Mr. Hill, I am perplexed by what you brought up, and I hope that we'll be able to look into that and maybe give you an answer back after this meeting today. To the individuals that came and expressed their concern about the adult daycare, my heart goes out to you. I know your positions are difficult. I'm, it saddens me that you are put under strain. I do also really feel like we have confidence in our leadership team that they are doing everything that they possibly can, even though they feel like they've exhausted everything that they can. It encourages me to hear Doc, Mr. Smitherman, say that they're still investigating other options, and I appreciate your patience, and I do definitely pray that you're able to find a way to have some relief, because I know that's very stressful. I too attended the awards for the agricultural volunteers and citizens, and really, Onslow County farmers. It was very exciting, and really just, I don't, again, I say this probably about every group, but being in this position, you just really get to... but being in this position, you just really get to, exposed to people who do so much for our community, and the volunteers within that organization of farming here in Onslow County just blew my mind. And then the people that also work here to provide food for whoever it is that they're feeding, whether it's other animals or people, really just so wonderful. Last week also, we had the wonderful opportunity to tour, and they call it MCAS, New River, by, you know, the military terms. We were, some of us commissioners participated in doing a tour in different places around the base, and the theme was "The Day in the Life of a Young Marine Family," which really shed some light on how, what goes on there. Housing, which is, there's some great challenges over there on the base as well. We were also able to get up in the tower, which was kind of fun to see around Onslow County and get in the, what was that room? The radar room. So, we just, we have a great partner with the military here as well, and I just wanted to say thank you to Colonel Bennett for coordinating that for us. And have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, wanted to express my concern for, for those of you that are misplaced by the adult daycare. When I heard about it, I went to, went to see Clay, and, and thank you for taking a few minutes with me, Clay, our senior services director. And I, I am convinced that, that they've tried their best to find a place to, to actually have this, to have the Center for Adult Daycare. And I'm, I'm sure they'll continue to look, like Commissioner Carpenter said. I hate to see the program go away for two years. Maybe it won't, but we have to plan for the, plan for the worst, I guess. And, and we don't want to tell you that it'll be back in two months and then not be able to find a place to put it, and it doesn't come back. But the, the work at the senior center, the multipurpose building, it has to be done. We, we just have to do it. And unfortunately, the, the building that we found to replace that building is just too small and not adequate for, for all of the services that we offer. So, I'm sorry, sorry for your hardship. Maybe it won't be so, so long. I don't know. Did want to mention, though, that Friends of Aging, lasagna dinner is next weekend, next week, right?
Right.
Next Friday, and that's always a lot of fun, if you want to go eat lasagna. And I wanted to mention that Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development has a housing summit scheduled for the 21st of March. If you'd like to know what the housing issues in Onslow County are, I think it'll be a good, good forum to, to learn something about our housing issues. You have to register for that event. It's limited space. Go to Eventbrite.com, and you can register for that event. It's free. And finally, play ball.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. B- Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you. I'm concerned about the daycare also, and our, our staff has been working awful hard on that. David brought it up a while ago. It's a concern of mine. It always has been, and senior services means a lot to all of us. The other thing is, I want to thank the people of Onslow County. I'm one of those commissioners that got going on to the general election along with Mr. Knapp next to me, and I want to thank the commissioners for thanking us, for getting through that. It means a lot to us to be able to move forward. And it's very fortunate for me, those that know me and know me very well, this will be my sixth term, which is basically unheard of in Onslow County. Most of the time commissioners go about two terms, and then something happens, but I've been very fortunate. It's an honor and a pleasure to actually work for the people of Onslow County. But during this campaign, there's one thing that really concerned me, and everybody's talking about turnover and turnover, and I want the people of Onslow County to understand. You know, our, we talked about the DSS workers. They're under stress constantly. Detention officers, our deputy sheriffs, and our paramedics, they're under a lot of stress. That's why you get so much turnover. But turnover is something that happens with a big, we have like 1,300 employees. I just want the people to understand, we're working hard to keep those people, but stress is tough. I can tell you, myself and Knapp can tell you, and so can Royce, being former police officers, very stressful, very stressful job to go out and go to work, and your parents or your wife and your kids and everything else, hoping you come home that night. And, and I can tell you from experiences, I got shot one day in Swansboro, 1973, and that was pretty traumatic for my family. So, it's very stressful for some of the jobs that we have in the county, and I want to thank all of our people, all of our public safety, and all of our employees that are under stress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Vice Chairman?
I got a couple of things to say. Pastor Peterson, I hear you loud and clear. And ma'am, I couldn't remember your name. I tried to write it down quickly, but I'll get it. I hear your concerns. I totally understand where you're coming from. With the father, my father had Alzheimer's. Actually, he had dementia brought on by Parkinson's disease, and I've watched him deteriorate for seven years. And the adult daycare center, and I had a talk with somebody just recently about it, is very, very, very important. And I know we're trying hard. We need to look at it even harder to find an alternative, a lot sooner type alternative for these people, because if you've never taken care of an elderly parent, and which I think we're obligated to do as their children, we need to take care of our, our parents. They took care of us when we were coming up. We need to take care of them. And they, they are a valuable asset, and we can't, we can't discard our elderly citizens whatsoever. We have to support them, and we need to find a way somehow to get them into a facility, if we can, sooner than later. So, I, I understand your plight. Mr. Hill, it was a pleasure talking to you on the phone the other day. You're a very interesting man. I listened to you. I have some concerns for you personally. I, I hope you are getting better, and that's something that we're going to be discussing here, because what you say makes a lot of sense. And if we can do it legally, if we can do it the right way, we're going to do it and try to do it, because I totally get what you're saying. And, and again, you know, my prayers for you as well, sir, and I'll be in touch with you after the meeting. Couple of things real quick. I want to thank Ben, Captain Ben Frank, Lieutenant Kobe Kennedy, and firefighter Daniel Covington. And the reason why I want to thank them is on Sunday this past week, my wife was downstairs cooking breakfast. My mother-in-law was with her, and I don't know what she did, but she burnt something, and it hit off our fire alarm. And our fire alarm is tied into our house alarm, which is tied into the fire department. And I was upstairs in the shower, and I was getting out, and my wife says, I can't turn this stupid thing off. And the next thing I know, I hear a fire truck outside my front, in my front yard, and I'm in a towel. So, I get dressed real quick, and I hear the firefighter saying, you know, we were notified that there was a potential fire here. My wife was embarrassed, and she said, I'm really sorry, there's not a fire. I burnt something. Anyway, I thought it was kind of amusing. But the point I'm making is, they, they responded lickety-split. So, if, if something were to happen when I was, while I'm gone from my house, or my folks are gone from my house, I know that they're going to be there. And so, my wife decided to buy them all large pizzas, embarrassed, made me carry it to the fire department. And I had to apologize for the inconvenience, but they took it in all good fun. And I'm really, I'm really proud of our EMS and our firefighters and how quickly they responded. And they just wanted to make sure that everything was okay, and they asked her three times, you sure everything's okay? Can we come and look? They came in and looked. Everything was good to go, but I appreciate them. And to Norman Bryson, who's our emergency service director, I appreciate, appreciate him and his people as well. Real quick, I see the owner of the Jacksonville Ospreys in the audience. I think the Ospreys is one of the biggest things, the best thing to happen to Jacksonville. I echo Commissioner Bennett's comments. It's, it's about bringing people in here, but it's also about our hometown feeling that we own a team. We have a team here that represents Onslow County and Jacksonville. And the name Ospreys reflects that it shows our association with the Marine Corps as well. And I just wanted to tell you, I've talked to you before privately. I don't know if you remember, but I, I talked with you. I even got the Osprey sticker, and my wife's got it on her car. I think it's, it's a win-win for this county, and I think it's going to bring in some revenue. But more importantly, as Commissioner Carpenter said, it was so entertaining on the opening day when you guys played, bringing in a team, I think it was from Kinston or somewhere like that. That was amazing. It brought back a lot of memories for me, and it's a wooden bat league. I grew up with wooden bat leagues, and to hear that ball off the bat, you can't describe it. That was a great feeling. So, kudos to you, sir. And as you know, you've definitely got my support for the Ospreys. And the last thing I just want to say, first of all, I want to thank all the voters that came out during this last, past election on Tuesday. Like my companion here, Mr. Paul Buchanan, I was reelected to go to the, the general election in November, and I'm very pleased with that. There's some other projects that we're focusing in on. We want to make sure we maintain our consistency. But I want to thank all my supporters publicly who came out and encouraged me, voted for me, worked some of the polls for me. But more importantly, I want to thank my wife. She's my campaign manager. She was, she was my, she was my steady rock through this whole process, and she did so much to keep me focused and push me to, to hit the polls, even though she didn't want me to run this time again. But despite that, she still pushed me, and, and I know she's listening, and I can't thank her enough for what she's done. And for my daughters, they came out and worked the polls hard for me. And it was a long day Tuesday. Am I right, Paul?
Yes, sir.
I met Paul at 7:00 in the morning. That's early for me in Swansboro, and then we bounced around all the county polls. But thank you so much, folks. Thank you very much. I look forward to the next four years, and I feel humbled and honored to be reelected. And again, I just can't say how thankful I am for you. We'll get back to you and Mr. Hill and Mr., and Pastor. Those are some important things, and I just want to thank you guys for coming out and sharing that with us. And I hope you all have a great day and the rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. To those that come out and, and shared the adult daycare, absolutely. I know that our, our, our leadership team is going to continue looking, working, trying to find arrangements in the, over the time that they have, and continue even after the date of the 28th. And hopefully, we can come across something to, to provide that, because personally, I know when you're, you're, you're taking care of somebody, it's, it's a job. My 84-year-old mother is doing, doing well, but my sister and I take care of quite a few things, and we have someone that comes in during the day. I don't know if you had a chance to, there's a list of folks that provide some at-home services through senior services. They can give you a list to contact some folks that you may be able to get into the home to help with some time off. I hate to use it as that term, but some time off. Of course, we have to pay the folks, and, and I understand that as, as well. So, hopefully, we'll find somebody that can help you in those situations until maybe we can come across a place to provide some, some, some opportunities for, 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 lack of a better term, a break. But it's always important to take care of our, of our, of our family and our, and our parents in particular. So, thanks for coming out and sharing that. We understand, and we understand the significance of that. Rick, I appreciate you mentioning the Ocean City. Folks, if you don't know the history of Ocean City and on Topsail Island, just go in and Google that, and you'll get the history of Ocean City and why that is the location chosen for, for the Jazz Festival. A lot of, a lot of history right there in that little piece of, of Topsail, Topsail Island. So, thanks for coming out. Appreciate you coming out today, speaking about the secondhand smoke. I don't think there's a family in the, in the world that hasn't been impacted by cancer of some sort, and a lot attributed to that. So, we'll continue working and see if there's anything we can do to, to assist you with that, if there is anything that we can do. Commissioner Carpenter mentioned over on the New River Air Station, and she mentioned young marine families. One thing that really jumped out at me was the age of the Marines in the radar room.
Yes.
And the age of the Marines in the tower, which is a testament to what public education does. And the reason I shared that is that I was at a leadership meeting, a group at Kenan Flagler School of Business in Chapel Hill, and the gentleman that was presenting to us said he was presenting out on a carrier of some sort, and they had to fly out in a helicopter. He met, he ran the leadership course. He got back on the helicopter and was flying back in, and he was surrounded. The pilots were obviously a little, little bit older, because they're typically like lieutenants and captains at a minimum flying those helicopters. But the crew seemed to be 18 and 19-year-old kids. And he said, buzzers, alarms, and all sorts of sounds started going off on the flight back to the land. And he said, a bunch of young people were running around pressing buttons and pulling cords and moving, and they never showed any fear. And he said, I didn't know if I was supposed to be scared or not. He said, so when we got back and landed, I got off the helicopter, and I said, hey, Marine, was everything all right? And he said, no, sir. We're probably about 30 seconds from having to put this thing in the water. He said, oh my God. And then he finished with, that's a testament to public education, because those Marines onboard that helicopter, just nine or 10 months earlier, were walking the stage at somebody's local high school after graduation, and less than a year later, they're protecting America. So, regardless of your choice, be thankful of education in the United States and what it produces and what it does. And I in particular look out in the crowd and see a, a student I, I had in my school years ago. So, we, good to see that, Dylan. And education is, is so important. Looking forward to soccer, Battle at the Beach, the Britney, the East Coast Invitational Basketball, and Freedom Boxing, and all the other things that are bringing people to Onslow County for entertainment. And we are so excited that we are going to be able to bring people here for some baseball in Onslow County with the Jacksonville Ospreys. So, with that being said, I thank you for being here, and I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Second motion, we're adjourned.